We'll call please, Armenta, Dale, here, Hoffman.
Here.
Candela.
Here.
Kwan, here.
Here.
Sullivan. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Your pledge of allegiance is that in the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our umbrella, in this world, liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have the floor for public comments on agenda items only. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will proceed to the 2019-2020 budget hearing. And I will turn it over to Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Okay, so, thank you, this is the 2020 budget hearing. Just a reminder to everybody, this requirement of approving our budget. You saw a few meetings ago, our tentative budget. And I'm just going to recap a couple of the changes we've had since the tentative budget was presented. And once we got a couple of amendments realized. I won't recap too much, but it's our new staff, there are some components of our annual budget. They're not only made up of our salary and benefits. You guys came to the perfect meeting. Education fund is our primary source of funding teacher salaries, supplies, student services. This is an updated graph of our operating funds. It shows what our projected operating revenues and expenditures are, and our ending projected fund balance. Same thing as our different surpluses and deficits we've had the last couple of years. So we're fortunate to have some fiscally responsible spending and some good revenue sources that have came in. So we've been operating with surplus the last few years. And we're projecting a few years of deficits with a slight surplus built in there. That color is wrong on FY23, that's projecting a small deficit. This is just an overview of our different operating funds with our... These are unaudited numbers. We haven't got our official audit figures back yet. So that's our unaudited ending fund balance for FY19, along with our budget and expenses and revenues with our estimated fund balance. So we're projecting about 71% fund balance to expenditure ratio, which are very healthy ratios with our conservative budget that we do. I'm sure to pause there, I forgot to point out at the beginning, there's a couple of attachments that I've updated in your board packet. The one that tells the changes really, it's a 21-page document, and it just shows all our expenses and revenues. So you can see I have two columns, there's one for the prior draft budget, one with file draft. So it'll show a couple of the changes that I've made. There wasn't a lot of substantive changes. We've realized our actual general state aid, or sorry, evidence-based funding money, formerly general state aid, we've got those actuals back. And we've got some actuals back as far as some of our grants, the biggest of which is Title I and IPDA grant. We've got those final numbers back. And there's also been shifts as far as the salaries. The budget and numbers were very close to what our final contracted, new contract amounts would be for the teacher's contract. So I didn't adjust those too much, but there's some depending on where our teachers shifted to. So you can see, we shifted the benefits, salaries, and supplies based on that. So just an overview of why we do keep a fund balance. I pointed out that we projected 71% fund balance expenditure ratio. Just to keep, it's really for any of the unknowns we may encounter throughout the school year. And depends on the new state pension obligation that they've shipped into the district. And also, traditionally, we have our state funding payments that are delayed. Transportation claim payments are often delayed by a half of a year. A couple of our other funding payments are always long until. So that's why fund balance is important. This is just an overview of our different revenue sources, the biggest of which obviously is our taxes. And it just shows, yeah, just about 73% of our actual revenues each year is made up of our tax bracket. Same thing with our expenditures, the salary and benefits make up the biggest portion. We do have the outlier this year with the capital outlay. It's finishing up our referendum money. We spent about $5.5 million last year. We're going to spend about $5.5 million in the next two months or so to finish our payments for the referendum board. That's why this graph, again, is pretty skewed usually. Stairways and benefits make up a lot larger portion. So again, our assumptions are, you know, made up of the new contract that we just, that is going to be presented to you on the next board meeting for approval. Plug those numbers in, as well as some contingencies in case there is staffing changes that take place. And it gives us a lot of flexibility based on our conservative budget and allows the district a lot of flexibility in case new programs need to be enacted. Also, it just includes a lot of our work that we've done, and it still allows us more flexibility for any future facility projects. In the next board meeting, we're going to be discussing our five-year facility plan, and outstanding items that we're going to still have on our plate. And we're going to discuss different funding methods around accomplishments projects. To give you the timeline, you saw the tentative budget. It's been two months since you last seen the tentative budget. Tonight, we're going to ask you, the board, to adopt the budget once we adjourn and go into the next regularly scheduled meeting. And you need to file the budget by September 30th, or ask for extension. So that will be filed with the State Board of Education. It'll be posted on our website and be made available to the public. So that is the budget here. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
We now open the floor for public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, then we will have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Candela?
Yes.
Losada?
Yes.
Armenta?
Dale?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now, we will call to order the business meeting for this evening. I don't think we need to turn the room off. Okay. So again, we ask for public comments on agenda items for this current agenda. Do we have any public comments? Okay, moving on, we will proceed to presentations.
Thank you. So this year, we were fortunate enough to hire 11 new certified staff members. And they went through a few days of training with Dr. Baraka and the district leadership team. We got them, as you can see, brand-new smart little teachers with Team 2019. It's a new initiative that we started. Posted all of our work on Twitter, so we were able to highlight the two days of professional development that they had. And I want to just have them have an opportunity to meet. While, so you can put some names with face, I know not everybody was able to make it, but if I can ask the principals to please take a minute. We can start with Dr. Prebert, introducing your new staff and their position. And then, the new teachers would stand up with their names.
Daisy and we're chatting, so I answered. I'm very excited about our new team. Let's start with Elizabeth Mandette Eckert. She is a first-grade dual English teacher. And she has been doing an outstanding job of getting to know our students and leading our instruction in both English and Spanish. Is that good?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, Emily Caitlin Harris. She is one of our special education teachers. And she's supporting all students with IEPs. And she, I have heard amazing things about her as well. I got the opportunity to get to know her, and I think she's doing a great job. And can't wait to see how she does throughout the year. And then, we also have Anne Eckert, who is coming to us from a little bit of a mom and a story background. And she's teaching general education in the second-grade classroom. We have the chance to get to know each other a little bit more today. And I am excited about her plans for supporting the community and supporting our school. Thank you.
All right. West Oak Intermediate School, we have four new hires, two of which are here tonight. Shelby Lawson is one of our third-grade dual English teachers. And she is outstanding. She's had a great start to the year. And she's kind of worked her way into our third-grade team just perfectly. So they're happy to have her, and she's doing very well. And one half of our Diamond Duo from RP Group is Mike Reson. He is very loyal to us, he came to us on short notice. And he's doing an outstanding job, and the kids love him. And just happy to have him here. We, you know, both teachers bring a bunch of energy to the learning environment. It's been a lot of fun.
All right, we'd like to look at that for you. I know. But we're going to be speaking to you through science for our streaming site for her. And she's a pride guard. She comes, she's willing to go out and voice her experience. And the kids love her, the team inside, and our person.
So welcome again, you've been a great addition. That means our team, that's our district, that's our community. And we look forward to a great year with all of you and a bright future. So thank you for coming. And we just wanted an opportunity for you all to know that.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I know you've made a lot of planning and work to do, so you are welcome to go home.
Thank you for coming.
Our second presentation tonight is District 76 Communications Update. And we have done a lot of work in the past four years. And really, it made this a goal area as far as excellence in communication. How we communicate, when we communicate, how often we communicate, and who we communicate to. And so we thought this was a good opportunity, especially with some of the newer board members, with us, to just explain all of the different types of communication that we have. Communications that we have at a district level, as well as what each school does, and what each school does consistently, as well as what they do differently, to tailor their needs for the specific grade level and age groups that they have. So I'm going to hand the floor over to Mr. Hanson, who is going to talk about, since he's kind of the driver behind many of these things, especially electronically, of not only getting the format out, the information out, but just posting the information and making sure that it's updated and it's current, and that everything is aligned and consistent. So we hand it over to you, and then all of us can just comment. And then, the principals are going to talk a little bit on the next slide about each one of their school communications and what they do. So, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. On the first slide, we specifically talked about district communication. But as we move over to the second slide, that focus more explicitly, you'll see some continuity on a lot of the same services, but from a different perspective. So from a lens of the district perspective, I'd like to share various ways of resources, the purposes, and how often, frequency you would see those resources being used when it comes to communication. First and foremost, our school messengers, our mass communication services. So we're going to quite often utilize that for distributing email, phone, and text messages, informing and engaging, or even seeking out feedback from our stakeholders. It's used as needed, but if you notice with the amount of emails and phone calls and texts, it's not really scheduled. It happens quite often over the course of the week based on what we're, whether promoting, or seeking out feedback, or if we want to share any information regarding important information like transportation. Our website continuously is getting updated. And I'm actually going to say website and calendar together, as both of those kind of go in tandem. However, we communicate district-wide information to our stakeholders, but also to a bigger audience, because we want to make sure that that information is updated quite often. It's, we would say, ongoing, because on a daily basis, if anything needs to change, we need to reflect that on the website. On all perspectives, not only for schools, for our district. So we'll always be illustrating news and events available on there, as well as very important information for our families. And we also want to make sure that that website is responsive, so that sooner or later, our audience member, I'm sorry, viewer is viewing it, can view it off a computer, phone, or whatever, with ease. Our presence continues to grow on social media. And we want to illustrate that we, whether from Twitter, Facebook, or Instagram, we're continuously posting, we're highlighting district information, school and classroom events and activities to our stakeholders and public presence. So even though you can get important information via social media, it's more to highlight that as opposed to that. And that's, once again, ongoing. If you follow us on any social media, you see that we post quite often. Our daily newsletter happens once a month. So as difference from any other newsletters you receive, from the district perspective, we communicate our District 76 updates once a month. However, during the weekly email that we receive, I'm sorry, that we share out every Friday, it's always attached, so it's always available to our families that they didn't get that publication. And once again, with paper publications, we communicate events, district updates, programs, and services as needed. So any sort of documents that we've sent home, like save the dates, or so on and so forth, we do share out as well. And our state of the district is very important to be able to show out as a yearly digest of school and district progress that happens annually. So it's kind of a overview of the many different areas we communicate in the district.
I know before the principals get started, I just want to share that next week, we'll be sending out a survey. We've done this now, this will be our third year of just asking families, what is the best way that they like to use for communications? And one added feature that we put on for this year is paper. And so, the first way, if they choose paper, then they don't have to go on to the rest of the survey, because those are all electronic devices. So if they have paper, and, you know, in discussing this with principals, they kind of know which families may not have access to those resources. So they specifically do keep those items on paper, or will communicate them in a different way, whether it's through a phone call home, or the teacher will send home something specific to them. It's not a lot, but we do know who those families are and have identified them that way. So that'll be something new this year. And then, next year, when families register, that survey will be included in the registration packet. So we'll know right away how families want to get their information, whether it's text, or email, or phone call, or all give out, or just paper.
All right, so on the school communications, you'll see that this slide is very well aligned with the district slide. And it's not by accident. We also use school messenger from the building level. And for much the same things, email, flash, text, phone, you know, the robo-calls. But at the building level, we're using these for specific, whether it's Diamond Lake, West Oak Intermediate, or West Oak Middle School to just kind of inform me that there's information coming, or where to find information. While all these other avenues that we use will have the information, the school messengers use to kind of make sure that we're notifying you that the information is there. So that was the difference between those.
We do have a part of our website, each of the buildings or schools has a part of the website that is dedicated to it. And that allows the principals and the staff to really personalize the information. Of course, those important dates are on that website. But again, as Mr. Prebell said, school messenger is where, or the variety updates that we'll also talk about, that is where you get those dates and the times and what to expect. That's the nitty-gritty information. The school website is a great place to get lost in. There's so much information there on each of the buildings. And you can learn so much about each of our grade levels, curriculum, everything that's happening. It's just in a little bit of a different format, with a little bit of emphasis more on a global point of view. And then, I also want to share with you the social media, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. This is the highlight for the district. If you are not following us, please follow us. Our teachers are posting every day, we're posting every day. It's showcasing all the amazing things that we're doing every day throughout the district. It's really an opportunity for us to share our story in a way that you would not be able to get to see by just checking our Facebook page and definitely that on school messenger. It's the fun, it's the cute kids, and the exciting things that are going on that you would never have realized that we're doing on a day-to-day basis. So we're really excited about the work that we're doing. We'd like to share it with you and the community.
So I get to speak about learning management systems. And they really become more relevant, if you will, or more direct as you go up in grades. However, there's a variety of different ways to communicate with parents, guardians, et cetera, and students through LMSs. And so, many of our teachers use Classroom Dojo to look at on-task behavior, you know, good points, et cetera. Kids like to earn their Dojo points. And that information is shared with parents as well. Google Classroom is probably the most relevant learning management system. Many of the teachers will set up Google Classrooms, whether it's by a homeroom, or whether it's by subject area, period, et cetera. But this is where assignments are usually given, feedback is given to kids. They know where to go. But also, parents can be communicated through Google Classroom. And so, the teacher has your email, then there's a way for that to be checked. So that when something is entered into the Google Classroom, the parent may also get that assignment, just to be aware of that to do. And then, of course, there's Power School. Now, at the elementary schools, Power School is used very differently. They may use them to generate your end of the trimester reports, if they're relevant or not. And I believe, you know, when we go to the middle school, the Power School is really the electronic gradebook. You could go on to that and have a Power School login. And if parents don't have that, we ask them to contact the office, and the ladies work with them. It's also posted on the website and referenced often for parents to use. But students also have a Power School login and check-in. And it's interesting, as the school year started, many students have come back and said, "I forgot how to do this," or "I don't remember my login." But they have to also do that, because that's part of building that responsibility and that self-directed learner. So there's other types of learning management systems or communication systems out there with regard to academic, or social-emotional, or behavioral progress. But these are really the big three that the district employs.
So when talking about school updates, weekly, we will send out information for each building that will go out through school messenger, which we referenced before, via email. And we'll link all of those together. And there's a lot of overlap, so that there's good communication between buildings of some of the important events that are going on. And Diamond Lakes and West Oak Intermediates, you'll find directly on the website from the link. And West Oak Middle School uses a Google site that you can connect to from there. There's just providing a little bit of a different platform, as we're encouraging. We do a lot of the same things with our students as well, at the Student Hub. So that's a great place every week to get that information, specific to each school. And we do try to really make sure that that is regularly updated. Looking at paper publications, for example, this Friday, there'll be a lot of information that's going to be going home related to STAR, and related to partnership reports. We've got some things going home on health form updates, vaccinations, things like that. There, it's, there's a reason we added to the survey, because it is an important medium that we recognize families need. So as needed, that goes home. And this is one of those we totally, as needed. So parents need to look for information coming home with their student.
Again, the paper publication, are you speaking to that, or just want me to?
Sure.
Paper publications, very.
That was it.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Still that old, that style.
No, because I was going to respond when I was waiting for the poll to, I mean, the cue to respond to that we've identified families again. Any other questions from the board?
Can I just make a comment? The website is so much better than it used to be. It's really good. I sort of compliment you on that. I appreciate it. Trying to find things on it, it's way easier now, so.
Fantastic, it's great to hear, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our business agenda for this evening. We have three items. The first is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and or non-controversial if approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, and industry leaders, citizens, wish to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or item will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved at the Diamond Lakes 76 Board of Education, exception approved, omnibus vote agenda items A through E as listed below. May I have a motion to approve? Second? Losada?
Yes.
Sullivan? Armenta? Dale?
Yes.
Hoffman? Candela?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Moving on to the budget. Whereas the Diamond Lakes 76 Board of Education, County of Lake, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared tentative form of budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. And whereas public hearing was held as such budget on the 24th of September 2019, notice of sedating was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all of their legal requirements have been complied with, now therefore being resolved by the Diamond Lakes 76 Board of Education as follows. Section 1, that the fiscal year of the school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. Section 2, that the following budget be needing an extent of amounts available in each fund separately and expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of the school district for said fiscal year. May I have a motion to approve?
Okay.
Kwan? Yes. Candela?
Yes.
Armenta? Dale?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Losada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, and our final business item for tonight is personal item. Be it resolved at the Diamond Lakes 76 Board of Education, exception approved, the personal item is depicted on the agenda. We have one being hired. May I have a motion to approve? Candela?
Yes.
Losada?
Yes.
Armenta? Dale?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Kwan? Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes our business agenda. Moving on to court discussion.
So this is a few items that we wanted to discuss with board and release an update with board, and give them an opportunity to ask any questions or any items that you want us to follow up with. And as you know, we have two new service provider partners. The first one is classroom service. And we know the board has some questions. The first meeting, that's just how things are going, how to increase the participation at breakfast. And so, please know that as a district leadership team, we've been meeting about this weekly and discussing it, it's also more than weekly sometimes, and just making sure that kids have access to quality food, that parents are getting the right information, there's enough time to eat, that all of the dietary restrictions are met. And so, I'm going to let Mr. Rogers kind of address things on the updates that are happening, because I know that principals have tweaked some things that are scheduled so more kids have access to breakfast, as well as more time to eat. So, Mr. Rogers, if you want to talk to that, and then principals, please feel free to comment on anything specific to your school.
Yeah. Sorry, this has been a little must-have month since we've been the last, or a couple of weeks at least since we've been the last update, I feel like. But the breakfast program is steadily improving. And I think the biggest compliment to, you know, the principals and our food service staff is we're able to quickly make changes that we see are issues. So for instance, he was really working well with eighth-grade breakfast program. They're getting on the bus, they go into the cafeteria. He was taking a long time to do individual breakfasts for all grade levels. So we decided to change up this week and have whole breakfast for, is this really canned back to you guys here? We were able to do whole breakfast for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So it's really reduced the amount of strain on our staff to get breakfast ready. At the same time, I think it's a good flow with the middle school. We talked with Chris Peter on establishing this. And, you know, we're going to see how participation hopefully increases, and just the functionality of it in the district, middle school will increase. Also, we are going to keep breakfast open for two periods now, because we've got some feedback, kids may want to eat right away at the beginning of the day. So at the middle school, they can come in the first period since they got the bus, or they come in right after their, come in right away, or they come right after the first period to get their meals. So we're hoping by keeping it open for two periods, they're going to get better participation as well. So status quo at the intermediate school and elementary school, we're going to keep it the same, where they're going to individual bag lunch, bag breakfast, and it goes right to their classroom. But same thing, we're going to evaluate that, see how that, see how the middle school works. So we may transition that to the other grade levels if we see a change. As far as the lunch, I've heard a lot of good feedback. We've spelled some bumps in the road as far as making sure we have enough quantity. The biggest issue we have is we don't have enough parents. The biggest issue we have is we don't have enough parents that are still signed up for the program and ordering on a daily basis. So we've kind of came with some suggestions as far as what we'd like, what we think a positive change would be. One of which is we've heard a lot of feedback, a lot of feed that we have to pay. It's a four point six five percent D E to use the system. That's my meal order system. And it's what Quest recommends, it's what District 120 uses as far as their partnership with Quest. But the main difference is we're passing along this cost to the parents. A lot of parents who have middle schooler kids are kind of questioning why they have to absorb the cost where the high school doesn't have to do that. So we've looked at ways and costs associated with that. I think it would be a positive change to increase parent participation by the district absorbing that cost. So it's really anywhere from about a fifteen hundred, potentially a two thousand dollar cost with the district if we were absorbing each of the meals. I think that's on the higher end, as soon as participation goes up. But it was something we wanted to bring to your guys' attention, received issue that may help boost participation. So at fifteen hundred, two thousand per, for the entire year, the district absorbed that four point six five percent cost. That's based on projections, projecting increased enrollment. But I've had numerous parents call in and wonder, hey, I'm not going to order lunch because we've got to absorb this fee. Why do we have to take convenience fees? Because that is the only method we're giving parents to pay. We're not advertising, giving checks, giving cash, like a lot of people have been used to in the past. It's strictly, we want to do an online-based, credit card-based system. So if students' parents not go online and preorder, is that that student expected to bring their own lunch? Or is there a way that students are participating in the lunch program without going online? Right now, based on the start of the school year, we're really wanting to keep participation high. We have a lot of parents, students that get lunches without going online and registering. So right now, we're providing, you know, a percentage higher, you know, several percentage points higher than we actually expect to serve. For instance, we may be serving extra, we may be preparing an extra hundred meals each day at the middle school that has signed up that day. We're counting for people not signing up. So we're still writing down their names each day, and we're sending them bills home if they haven't paid. But we're allowing people to eat right now when they haven't registered, going off of the proper channels. That's not the, that's not a progress system. It's not a success to keep this financially solvent with our program. We need to have everyone paying, everyone signed up. And if they're not, you just need to make sure they're part of the free-reduced lunch program, things like that. So it's not every student is paid. A lot of the students are just, they be free or reduced, and they expect, hey, I've got a free meal and a half, why do I have to do any of their steps? We can't prepare the right amount of food unless they do sign up. So it's really, it costs the district money when we're over-preparing food right now. So we've had some cases of over-preparing, we've had a few instances of not having enough meals at the other school, and like, for instance, Diamond Lake, they want to bring a meal over from the middle school here. So it's just trying to regulate those quantities, I think, getting parents to use them more. That's the biggest challenge with lunch program. So that's why I wanted to bring you guys an idea of the district absorbing the cost. I don't necessarily need board approval, but some board direction on that would be beneficial if we could make, potentially make that change.
What does 120 do? Can you, I mean, I think you're talking about like fourteen cents a meal. Is that built into their fee, or are they just eating the cost?
The parents?
No, District 120. So are they building that extra fourteen cents into their meals, instead of the meal being three dollars, three fifteen, or whatever, or are they just eating that cost?
Yeah. And I, I've been trying to call their businessman, or he's been out of the office, just asking that question. I have to assume that they're building in a little bit of that cost, because they're not part of the, they're not part of the same program we are, it's just a different avenue. They have a lot of ala carte items, things like that. So I have to assume some of that cost is baked in, but not the entire amount. They want to serve these kids meals, and they're running into the same obstacle that we ran through in the past. And that's based on a lot of feedback that I've gotten from parents as well.
I mean, I've heard that feedback myself, but I, for me, it's unclear as to whether parents are really balking it out, not being able to pay that extra piece of fee, or just being annoyed that the published meal price is three dollars, and now when they go on, they're being charged this extra fee if they don't go to the whole, you know, I've asked somebody to discuss this before, if they don't go to the whole month at once, they keep getting charged a fee, but it's a percentage, so it's a proportional fee, so it's not like they're paying any more. But I think they just don't clearly understand. So I'm just wondering, if you've gotten feedback, is it a cost issue? Or is it just more of, we weren't aware of this fee, and now we're annoyed by it?
Yeah. It depends who I talk to, but I think it's more of an annoyance right now, because we, revenue we get from lunch programs is so small compared to what I have our, at most, we're looking at like thirty thousand dollars of revenue. And that is like, we increased things as far as our participation goes. We have so many free and reduced lunches. I think the families that are ordering are asking for another method of payment, and I'm not giving that to them. It's really, if they're pushing, they're pushing, pushing. I say, well, maybe you can give us a check, we'll fill in the meals on our end and absorb that, and take the time to do that. So I think it is really more of an annoyance. See, right now, they're thinking the district may be pocketing that extra money, or whatever the case might be. But strictly the cost of using a free platform.
Sure. Yeah, I think people just, in my experience of talking to parents and getting feedback, I think people just don't understand, you know, what was going on and the way it worked. Because I do think that most people probably pay by check or cash, and it's not necessarily due to the E-Pay system. That also does turn to be.
Yeah, exactly. And I have tried to relay that information about the E-Pay system. It's no different than what a lot of these families have done. It was a small percentage that actually used the E-Pay, but that's mostly stupid fees. So you're right, I can get some more feedback, I can get some more data on that, and really put out some, put out some feelers as far as serving. I, we want limited surveys as far as people ordering. I just don't want to put a barrier to signing up and physically ordering. Right now, we're just providing lunches to these kids, and essentially try and recap that later.
Sure. Well, and I think that overall, the feedback that we've heard from parents' community is that they're all very happy with the request. The quality of the food is very good, the kids are eating the food, and they're enjoying the breakfast. So I would think we don't really want to add any additional obstacles to making the programs.
Yeah, you're right. There's a lot of things to celebrate about the program. I'm really thankful that we're only three weeks in, and we're starting, we're trying to make fine-tuned changes to get participation up, rather than, oh my God, kids aren't eating. So that's the biggest thing, is we're getting kids eating every single day, and we've got a lot of positive feedback on the meals themselves. So it's, I think we're feeling a lot more comfortable with all the logistical elements we had to, you know, accomplish with the program. I got what I had to go to, that there are benefits to that online system. I know it's much easier to see what you ordered, how much you paid, than the old method of sending a check and having to kind of keep track of how much, how many days your kid ate lunch. You know, my house is appreciated, that you can get a lunch right now, using the days you paid for it. So I think there's definitely a benefit there, and we can increase participation in that by absorbing this small cost, and that's probably what we're looking for. Yeah. And I think we, once we fine-tune the system, that's when we can start moving towards our ultimate goal of offering two options, offering ala carte options to students. It's really just where we have a watered-down version of how we want to end this program. So there's a lot of good benefits that are still going to come up out. Until we get everyone used to the system, and using it, trusting it, we can't really start rolling out some other spaces on it. Yeah.
Here are two questions. First is, have parents actually said that they can't participate because they don't have a card that they can use? Or if they're not to use a card, they can use electronic?
I've only had one parent that has mentioned that, that they don't use credit cards, they don't use debit cards, you know, they don't want to use them for that end of purpose, they don't trust it. So it was really an isolated instance. I would say I've probably had, you know, a dozen people, maybe at most, that have said something about the convenience. I think it's inconvenience is how a lot of people put it.
The second is, in terms of determining how many meals you're going to need, how do you determine it for students on the free and reduced lunch program? Do you automatically order those? Or do they, I'm confused, or do they have to sign up as well?
That is the exact confusion point we're trying to overcome for parents. You have to sign up, and you have to order, just like you would any paid individual. But when you check out, it shows zero dollars.
Is that the same as before?
No. Before, you would essentially just have a, before we had frozen entrees, and they would essentially prepare them in the morning of. They would get tickets in the morning of, say, hey, I'm Steve, I want to order a meal. Then they would take it out of the freezer, count the ones that they need, put a little extra in, and then heat them up. So you didn't have to have any sort of planning, hey, if we didn't have enough meals from here, we'll take something else in the freezer. It was just, it was overstocked than we had. So it is entirely different, if some, this individual still needs to order. Like, you're checking out at Amazon, and it shows you don't owe anything at the end. So it's probably just a delay, I think, for some parents. And we're trying to get, I think the school's doing a great job of getting people in, and the secretaries are helping them, helping them order. All you have to do, if you're a free person, is sign in, click every meal for the month, and then submit. But they still have to go through that process, otherwise Quest won't have a proper count.
So is nothing that we can't be by, just say, we have to put in the lunch program, yada, yada, say, order a meal?
We could, absolutely. There's a way to say, here's the number of students we have, prepare six hundred meals a day. The problem is, the district is on the hook now for that meal, the kid doesn't eat it, or maybe they don't actually want to bring their, they want to bring their lunch. It's, we're spending, I get the exact dollar, I think it's three and a quarter for every meal request. So it's too much to absorb at that point. If a kid didn't eat a preferred meal, it's going to stay in the freezer for another day. Whereas now, they're preparing the meal every day, so it's a lot more margin, a lot less margin for error when it comes to preparing these meals. So the district's spending more money right now than we can reasonably, you know, afford.
And I mean, I simply, what would you say is, what percentage of kids on the free and reduced lunch program do not have free or reduced lunch?
That's a great question, and I'll get some data on that. Right now, we're taking a look at anybody who's free or reduced, and seeing if they're eating meals and they're not ordering them. Because we write down everyone's names, we have a student roster as far as who's, you know, who's in the district, and we'll write down every day whether they received a meal or not. And then we'll check whether they've signed up for my meal order. Because we can print up, there's a lot of analytical, a lot of analytical reports that you can print up from my meal order. It's targeting this family. So I'll get you some data as far as who's signed up for the free-reduced program and doesn't actually eat. There's not a lot of benefit applying to the program, besides your free meals every day, and then there's the eighty dollars or so you could not pay for your registration, because that is a big cost. But the meal, that is far outweighs registration.
I think that's what I would imagine.
Yeah.
My guess would be the best majority that I could be.
And there's, there is a lot of students that are, they're called direct certified. And what that means is they apply for, there are any qualics, and so is state assistance, SNAP, CAMP, Medicaid, stuff like that. You get directly certified to the state. So they might not have submitted the older paper application. When you submitted a paper application, you had to go through the steps on submitting income, applying, submitting this to your school office. Now we have, you know, probably sixty, seventy percent of our free and reduced applications are all direct certified. So they may hear less, but they're already to the states, they just get, they just get it anyway. So those are the groups that would be more likely not eat, and be free.
You're welcome. Eric, I'm going to extend out to Mr. Hoffman's idea. Certainly, we welcome the information that you have. If you can include a couple of scenarios. If, let's say, the district decides to supplement with that dollar amount that you recommended, then how would you address getting to that number, so that there's less waste and more equitable number to the, you know, kids that eat that lunch meal? Because that addresses one problem, obviously, the root problem of parents being able to become comfortable with the way that they pay. We can address that, approach that maybe differently in some other time. But for now, if we can, get some ideas of how you would approach, if we were able to do a supplement of those dollars, how to get those to the account?
Absolutely. I'll get some data on that, too. Otherwise, the program, I think we're, by and large, really happy with how it's turned out, considering all the obstacles we had to get through with. The logistical element of getting the meals here, keeping them at temperature. We have a lot of staff that are doing new things. And we're dealing with having to get outsourced employees to here on a daily basis, so the yoga, like, that enrollment. So kids are eating every single day, regardless of its cost, since it's a little bit more now. I think the program's really been a good success, based on the quality of the meals that we've had. I mean, I've eaten probably half the meals here, tried at least everything. I had way too many Boston sticks last week, I've had way too many quesadillas. Everything was fine, it was really, really good. But it's nice to hear some feedback we've got. So I welcome the fact that any of your students are eating. If I have any feedback that I can get, it's valuable, because I'm only here even if I'm chasing people down for most parts. So I'd just need to reach out if you guys have any questions or comments, and options that are served.
So either Eric or Bill, do you suppose, have you had any negative feedback from homeroom teachers with breakfast being served? Did it cause them any distractions, or just bunches of students that were in class? Is that a bit of a transition?
We had, we had this discussion, and it wasn't like negative, it was just, there's spills, there, it's just kids being kids. It's not, you give kids cereal and milk, there's going to be a mess. You know, and, you know, then the custodial staff or the day quarters are getting to come because they're doing something else, then to come find, get the crates and do all that. So it was just more logistical. It wasn't a complaint, everyone's excited that the breakfast is available. The bigger concern was, the kids aren't really hungry right away, it seems like. Some classes, they were, which is why when we discussed moving it to two points in the cafeteria, that we opened until second period, because some students might start their day and then realize, I'm hungry or now, or I need a snack. And so we just moved into that. I think going from the bags to the one press kit was better. But the teachers were not, there was not a negativity about it. They did say it does create a mess, or there's, it's just going to happen. But overall, the idea of why do kids eat roughly, supersede that, and it was more positive than negative.
Yeah. At the intermediate school, we've had, it's more procedural, just getting used to some things. But overall, we're having breakfast being delivered enough for every kid, they have it offered to them. And then, you know, we, internally, as far as procedures go, we're working on some, you know, more efficient ways, not the delivery, but, you know, once it's done, to come get it, and garbage and things like that, but it's, it's no big deal.
Overall, things are going really well, just like the other buildings. We've made some minor tweaks. We met our first day of school to see how things were going, and the teachers, we gave feedback, and they liked a room and a dustbin in the room, because opening cereal can be a little bit messy for little kids. Got that right away. Oranges, we learned, are really tough to serve to little kids, because they have no idea what to do with them. So we made some minor tweaks. But overall, I've met several teams this weekend, they're very positive, and I think things are going very well.
And just as a, I know this is how last quarter asked, if maybe we could have our facilities open health, which is this Friday, classes come, and just use samples of food, so parents can see what, what happened with the kids eating, and order some samples that press could provide. So we talked to them, and just because of the timing of things, the five-thirty, you know, just six-thirty, that, because we don't have a kitchen outside, it's hard for them to heat up the food. You know, they'd have to send another driver to get the food here. So what we thought is, on parent-teacher conferences, and we're going to have parents maybe even fill out a survey of just, you know, if they're engaged, you know, if they feel supported, if they feel supported, if I remember, put it together. And I remember putting together a parent satisfaction survey. And then in each of the school cafeterias, we'll have, because they'll be during the day, we'll have samples of the classroom. So they can maybe be more encouraged to come in, fill out the survey, try some food, kind of make it more of an engagement activity for them. So I thought that might be a better opportunity.
It's a good idea.
I haven't considered the fact that we don't have a kitchen.
Yeah.
So it's just like.
Right, so we, you know, they said we can bring fruit or we can bring cold items. I said, no, I want to have actual items that kids are eating, so like Mr. Rogers referred to, classless sticks, quesadillas, actual items the kids are eating.
Can I ask a quick question? Eric, in pre-juices, like how, what's the percentage of kids that typically eat hot lunch as compared to like this year?
We're still collecting kind of that data, it's still kind of skewed right now. It's one of the most important elements we're looking at. The, the meals are higher, but it's, it's still, we're collecting daily counts. We've gotten, you know, up and down. The first week was kind of throw that out because kids were kind of a little hesitant, I think, I wouldn't think you're gonna break. But the meal counts are up, but I was gonna give the full month of data before I have to kind of report back to you. But, you know, overall, I think it's been pretty positive. Because our, our counts were only, you know, four, five hundred at most on the given day district-wide. Now we're already approaching six hundred, seven hundred now, a lot on some days. So I'll give you some data on that when I report back about the students other free or reduced meal information.
Any other questions or questions? So our second item is on transportation. And I know that a few of you had questions or comments about just buses, less routes, how often kids are on buses, the length of time. And, you know, just how slow the length of the routes compared to the other routes and how does that done? So we would again, meet with Lakeside, talk to them weekly, sometimes daily. And then we have another follow-up meeting for that in a couple of weeks. So I know that we're tweaking some things, we're collecting some data as far as drop-off pickups, especially at that late because if that gets staggered or if that's late, that kind of sets off the whole schedule for intermediate school and middle school. So I'll go ahead again and let Mr. Rogers kind of talk and speak to that. And then I know each one of you would like to talk to maybe the tweaks that you've made or the data that you're collecting and what we're observing with that. And if, if we need to modify some things, if that's gonna come at a conditional cost, if we have to add buses or routes to that, we'll bring that back to you. We're not ready to make those decisions yet. We'd like to wait another two weeks to do that and scan and collect the data and observe. And then we're gonna make the Lakeside again next week and then we'll come back to you with a recommendation or a direction if needed.
So, you know, it's no surprise that buses are not at an acceptable level on how we need to be continuing this. So buses are still late, not all the buses by and large, that's why the principals have been really great collecting data. I think I speak a little bit more to that, but they're collecting data as far as when each route is arriving this day, when each route is for both the A and the PM stops. So there's a couple, as with every year, it's a couple one-off routes that are the biggest troublemakers. So it's continuously Route Eight at the middle school and intermediate school has been Route Five, I think, as we get mixed in there. By and large, I think, the triple-tier routes, those are the routes that you have to dive it late and go to the intermediate, go to the middle school. They're running the same route over and over again. By and large, that has been a good success because those routes have short route time. The biggest problems that we have are, I think it's intermediate routes like nine to ten that are, they don't triple-tier or share with any other route. And they're an hour long. So that's the biggest problem that we have, hit them bus for an hour each day, each way each day. So we're trying to come up with some solutions to that, one of which is splitting up these routes. And with the reason the principals are collecting this data is we're hoping to take some of the routes that are early each day and then add a couple stops from the routes that are late each day, help balance it out. With each change we've made and Lakeside's made, it's, it's resulted in positive changes and it's worked out well. So we're making kind of incremental changes, we're seeing how the buses respond, and then we're making other incremental changes, see how it responds. What we want to avoid is spending seventy thousand dollars on another bus just to cut a route down. Because it's not, that's not a sustainable practice. So the principals may have their own feedback on that. They're dealing with the day-to-day and they're the ones that are sitting outside every morning waiting for the buses to arrive. But it's the internal changes, I think, that are gonna help, you know, making sure that, that we're running conditionally each of our schools in the morning. Trying to make the changes, parent, they're on the drop-off procedures. And on top of that, Lakeside is really looking at how to optimize the routes. You know, they're, they're the first ones that'll admit they're having driver shortages. And because of that, it's causing issues on not having backup drivers and not, you know, being able to be as flexible on our counts. That's something that they'll freely admit is not our problem, but it's one we haven't lived with right now until they, until they get that. So all the principals comment, I think it's improving each day, certainly better than it was the first week. But it is the biggest issue that we're focusing on. The meeting last week was, I think, came away with some positive notes on what they're gonna be able to work on in the next.
I will say, incidentally, I am very pleased with the response that we're getting from Lakeside. We are working out the kinks, but I do feel that there's definitely a different level of collaboration than we've had in the past. They're willing to work with us and talk to us and problem solve, which is refreshing at least to, to me. There are challenges definitely at Diamond Lake in terms, especially in the season of the morning. I think in the afternoon, we, we have a more solid way of keeping families out of the parking lot and then getting the kids there. And then the families have been very collaborative and very supportive. So I believe how we're getting the kids onto the buses and out has been, the bugs have worked out. In part, in terms of the morning, we're doing the rolling stop where the buses and the cars are all in or, you know, just in the same line. That's presented a few challenges. This past week, we have started collecting data and we have learned that if the buses are there, like when they're supposed to be are early, it seems to be very quickly. And if we, they are delayed and then they get too many cars in the process and then it slows down. We are open to reconsidering how we do things, but that's definitely not an obvious answer. So that's why we're collecting data, because if we do decide to make any changes, we want to be very clear that it will have the desired results. And I think that that is not as easy to identify the right course of action as we would all like it to be. But we are working on it. And like I said, I do appreciate the partnership attitude that I have been receiving from Lakeside.
At the intermediate school, we have a really good separation between the buses and the cars, so that's not the issue. We're with the middle child who are, you know, caught in the middle of the Diamond Lake routes and then we have to get ours through and get back to the West Oak route. You know, a little wrinkle we have is the difference in between the drop-off procedures for the little guys. And we have their parents there, if they're not there, we've worked out that the buses will bring the Diamond Lake kids over to our building. And we want the Fairhaven staff to, Fairhaven, Diamond Lake staff, excuse me, Diamond Lake staff to get the parents there. That's not working out really well. We've had, you know, at most days, we have one, maybe two kiddos. Some days we have more, we have a party. We do fly up there early, so it's easy to see the building. But we've worked it out, I mean, it's, they're, they're picked up and gone. They get dropped off at three fifteen, they're out of here by three thirty, it hasn't been bad. And then our, our buses have been getting out of here more and more on time. I think we're probably clearing the lot by noon, ten after three, usually about three oh seven, which is pretty good. And then we can be out there around anywhere between four ten and four twenty.
Okay, that's what you said too, that like the, those routes, the extra routes have to come back and drop off at Diamond, drop off at intermediate. That just delays middle school even later. Because then they have to then go start their route, you know, a big link that has taken up the middle school. So I think that has contributed to it. And I think one other thing that I just want to comment, I believe is probably more so at Diamond Lake that I remember from the meeting, that caused a little bit of the delay and the boring, was the parents wanting the individual pickups. So they wouldn't take their students to the actual bus stop and they'll wait in a separate area and the bus has to stop. We're making those extra personalized stops for them. So we asked the bus drivers to maybe write down, you know, the location and the name of the family. So then we can, between us, make personalized calls and then just say we can't do that because it's delaying the entire route. But they're not ready to just drive by them quite yet. So that's been adding to the morning route to which is delaying those of the younger kids. Sorry.
I think we could echo a lot of the same, but we're the third tier. So however it starts in the morning, some drivers try to make up that speed by coming into the parking lot hot. It's not gonna do it. You know, it's gotten better, but it's not good enough, and especially in the morning. We have consistently several buses. And the hardest part is when we start it, we, we want the children to be able to go to the lot by eight seventeen so that we can encourage them to get breakfast at eight twenty-five and start our day at eight thirty. We are losing some instructional time just because of that. It's gotten better within that window. The afternoon is much better. Today we walked out and seven or eight of the nine buses were there. And so then the other one came in two or three minutes and we were able to get them out. That part has improved, I think, the afternoon, the morning. One of the, one of the things that isn't Lakeside's fault is the beautiful construction around sixty-eight-three. And, and that part has just added to the frustration. And, you know, that has to be recognized, that detrains. But we need to get this remedied as the winter is approaching and that's the concern. And then also that, that, they're frustrated sometimes when the buses continuously come late. Where people, data, just like everyone else, arrival and departure. And hopefully, you know, they will be able to adjust the route here and there. But I would echo with what Mr. Prable said. Our parking lot has really, it's enhanced that drop-off pickup with cars and buses. They still share the same exiting procedure, but it's, it's not like it used to be. So I think we did really well with that and I'm pretty confident that once they see this stat, they'll recognize the stuff, adjust a few more of the routes. I don't know, depending on which one.
I think it's just the, the matter, the morning is the biggest area that we're looking at from feedback where two to three buses coming in. It's, it's batteries within the window-ish, but ish is not gonna, is not gonna get repeated. So that, that feedback loop is still there and it has to be. So we, those kids, he's learning.
So how, how many students at the middle school level you say it's impacting in the morning? And how many minutes instructional time on average early?
So that's a great, great question. At the beginning of the year, I, I mean, buses were not getting there, I mean, really, it was twenty or thirty minutes in the morning. Many buses, it's narrowed down. And I think we had all the buses arriving by eight thirty, but that means they arrived, they have to disembark and come into the school and get ready. We're still losing five, maybe to eight minutes of instructional time for those students who arrive late. Give you an example, this morning, we had, I think, five buses that showed up after eight seventeen. That's, that's where it's getting tight.
And we want those students to have breakfast. And so that puts pressure on them, they're coming in panicked. And we want them to go eat, but they're concerned because we're also rushing them and their, their teachers are starting. So it's, it's difficult. I think I could echo a lot though, about Julian pointed out, Bob, pointed out that they're the first to acknowledge the issues that they got. It's not good enough to acknowledge them and they have to fix them. But it's, it's a different partnership, it's a different feeling that we had with Durham where they would point the fingers at everyone else. We're Lakeside, they'll tell us what we're doing wrong and we need to fix, we'll tell them what they're doing wrong. And they're the first to come up with some solutions. They gave us a radio that's a direct, it's, it's all their bus chatter and it's a direct line to their dispatch office. So they gave one of those each office and we can connect them. Whereas Durham, you feel like you call them and then take a phone off hook and be like, you know, sorry about that. So I feel like there is a true partnership here and we have a three-year contract with Lakeside with the option for going for two years. They know it is a long-term agreement if they do it right and it's a very lucrative contract for them. And I think it'll be a very lucrative partnership for us in terms of the quality of the money. And so, you know, we've, we've been in school for three weeks and it's, it's improving each day. So I think we have a lot of optimism that we're gonna get there.
And I don't want to misrepresent that too, they are, I've seen the managers riding, they're driving buses. I feel like you do because if they, they feel like they're short, I'll see the guy, we just met with you yesterday, you're maybe here on the bus, that's awesome. So they really, there is that element, so I do want to put that, make sure to put that in there, that we aren't just painting one side. There is, there is an effort there and they are reachable.
No, and I want, I'm sure this is Eric, but the president of the company took call me because he knew his management team came out here last week to keep with us. And just, we would have a call, you know, three weeks from now, because they said we're still, you know, growing in spaces. Your team has been very responsive, there's some things that we are doing differently and that is helping. But, you know, we'll get back to you in three weeks after we have one more week of data, one more meeting and help and action. So he was very concerned too, just making sure that, you know, we were satisfied and that it was the best way that we expected it to. So that, I never got a call from Durham, so that was very refreshing and very welcome.
Eric, I have, just saying that for this bus bulletin, can you tell us about that? Like how, how many, like how sensitive the notifications are gonna be? Like if it's ten minutes late, twenty minutes late, thirty minutes late, or I, I kind of, I'm not quite sure what to accept from that.
Yeah, and if it's new, Durham tried a whole lot, this, this app, it was very welcoming, but it wasn't accurate because it was specific to the bus, not to your student. Whereas this is a targeted alert just to your student, depending on what route they're on. So it's nice that it's very targeted, you're not gonna be getting a lot of unlicensed alerts where you're gonna skip over them. It's issued by their office and they're the ones that send out the alert. I don't think they have the exact criteria, I'm gonna find out for you. If it's, hey, it's ten minutes late, we'll automatically start sending out alerts. I think it's the minute they're, the way they described it to us at our last meeting is really the minute they start finding an issue. They, and they put some specific details towards it, was the bus is gonna be ten minutes late, we're gonna do the construction. Or the bus is gonna be ten minutes late, do the train back and up. So they try to be specific if they really want parents to trust the information that's on there. But I will get you some information about what their criteria is. They're not sending it out that the bus is three minutes late. They, they say ten minutes is kind of a rule development, they want to start sending some stuff out. But I, I welcome all the feedback you've given me about that. I get the emails, the principals get the emails when buses are late and we're monitoring those. But I love the feedback, how it helps you. I will say, I mean, that, that the emails that we've received so far, there, there's, there's been a couple of times where, like, I've read the email, I don't think some doesn't seem quite right about what they're trying to tell me there. And they will come back and within a minute with a correction and, you know, clarification on what they're reporting. So that's kind of nice, you know, just let you, you know, fly out there. So they, they seem to be pretty responsive with it, but I think it is doing, you know, working out some bugs with that.
Any other questions? Thanks, everybody.
The third item is board training. I know we've talked about having a meeting time, do some training together as a new group, a new board, and then also future planning and visioning. So we looked at the trainer and listed her help. The days, when I talked to Hail, that she has filled that we thought would be best after everyone on the board is trained, they go through their mandatory trainings, after the triple-I conference is Saturday the thirtieth, eight to nine noon, or Friday the thirteenth, six to nine P.M. So it's either four days, it's four days, not the end. So if you could just let me know if both or one of those works. Right now, I'm looking for both, both dates work for the trainers, so whatever is the most popular date for all of us. Is there anything that can make something that I can use?
I'd like to talk on there.
Okay, on the thirtieth. So should we hold it to the thirteenth? And then the last thing that we have for discussion is, Mr. Rogers and I have been meeting a lot about, you know, just looking at our current facilities and the work that has been completed over the past three years and then working with the architect as far as. as what hasn't been done and what needs to get done, and then over the next five years span. So we've kind of put their recommendations together, along with a budget, and we thought, if you'd like to have a facilities and financing meeting prior to the next board meeting, so we can go over the specific project, the costs, the need, and the timeline, and then how to fund that. We were thinking of doing that at five thirty, and then having a discussion. It opens, and this would be an open meeting, but it would be a committee meeting that we would have in the conference room. So if he opens a public invite, if he would like to attend, and we can definitely report it to him. But it would just be specifically focused on the financing facilities in a five-year span. And then we can bring it back to the board level, based on the committee recommendation, and then if and when we want to take action on that. So if you would like to email me, I can send out an invite, or if that time works for a lot of your, we would be interested in attending. We just wanted to make that information available to you. So I'll send out a calendar invite, and then you can just respond to that if you're available.
Great.
Okay. It'll be a little, yeah, an hour ready for the next board meeting.
Okay. Freedom of information requests, we don't have any notices and communications. We have the board calendar. I think everyone got that information, that the October eighth board meeting is going to be canceled in observance at family four, and so we will only be meeting the twenty-second and October for our business meeting.
So after this meeting, we were going to send that out to the public and then update the calendar, just so there wasn't any confusion if we sent out the next board meeting is canceled. So we wanted to wait until this meeting to do that.
Then we have the annual compensation report concluded.
I need to know on the financial page on that website.
Are these, is this the salaries, is that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
The salaries for teachers are twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Okay.
The salaries for legislators are current, nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
So we report the teacher's salaries, that's in an alloy database, the EIS report.
And then the key closet, welcome somewhere.
I just wanted to share with you that, as we talked about earlier in the year, that District Seventy-Six partnered with, online with District Four Twenty, and I know Daisy's working very closely with their staff, Sol and Jim DeCarlo, getting the center up and running. So it's at the annex, and we just wanted to share some pictures. They have some of their students that are working in their continuing ed program, kind of facilitating it, and inventorying things, and working in sales. So once the dates are scheduled, three times through, the slots will be open. We're going to get those out to you, and also where families can make donations. We still have donations that I'd like to make, we would direct it to District Four Twenty to do that.
Which is on Friday.
Right.
Which is great. And then, okay, so then, moving on to public comments for non agenda items, do we have any public comments this evening on non agenda items? Okay, there being no comments. We move on to others, which we have the sixth day rolling. Anyone have any questions? It looks pretty consistent, are we doing slightly well? Okay, no one has any questions, then we will move into executive session. For the employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complete launch against employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Do you have a motion to move into executive session?
Juan?
Yes.
Adela?
Yes.
Yael?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.